All right, it's four o'clock. I think we'll go ahead and get started. We're all present with the exception of John and Schwab. Do we have any oral communications?
None.
Okay. Can you go ahead and move on to the approval of minutes?
Voting is open.
Oh, I think we need to do a new motion.
Yes.
Is there a typo or am I just, is it only online? For the approval of minutes, enter text here. Oh, it is. Okay. It got updated. Never mind.
Yeah, I saw.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I motion to approve.
Second.
We're just waiting on you, Francis. Motion approved, four zero. Schwab absent.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to current business. We have updates from the city of Escondido, presented by Robert.
Thank you. We have with us Ed Vasquez, who is the project manager for the library infrastructure project. So I know that everybody had an opportunity to go and do the construction walkthrough. I'm going to let Ed have a quick moment or two to talk a little bit more about that, just to get everything on the record. And then after that, I do have a couple of updates that I would like to provide.
Hello. My name's Ed Vasquez, project manager for the city of Escondido on the library project. As you saw through our walkthrough a few minutes ago, so far, everything is according to plan. We're not delayed looking at completing the project March. We anticipated moving between back April to May. I don't have any unforeseen items that may cause delays as of right now. The only item that's pending that might factor into schedule is the concrete work outside the library. Budget-wise, we are still within the budget per the grant. We have not exceeded that. The city providing the funds for the window replacement has been a great help to the overall budget, I think. That cost of $815,000 has actually freed up my, the library project being able to do more interior-wise, of course. Other than that, I think biggest items that I could report on is the framing is 100% complete at this point. Electrical is probably 75% complete. The plumbing as of this coming week will be at 100% complete as well. And when I say complete, meaning the items behind the walls that were, are not going to be seen are complete and inspected, which means we can start moving towards closing off walls. If we can do that in sections, room by room, we'll do that. If we want to wait and just do a full, complete installation and closure of all the walls at one point, they'll do that as well. So from this point on, I'm hoping that a lot of the little details are going to be what are going to be left to decide, which a lot of them have been decided with paint, aesthetics, looks, things like that. But other than that, the major items I have been working through to get resolved, and I don't see any issues coming up anymore. So.
Thank you, Ed. One of the items that I would like to point out is last night at city council meeting, the city formally accepted the hundred, up to $105,000 donation from the Escondido Library Foundation, which is great. As a part of that also, they approved the additional $60,000 for the upstairs from the trust. The next step in that particular process is that on December 3rd, there are three separate items that will be going to city council on consent, and that is, requires the approval of the city council for us to purchase those items. Those include the entirety of our FFNE items, so the furniture fixture and equipment for both the first and the second floor. That will also include all of the book stacks as well for both the first and the second floor. And then the windows will also be going at that time as well. Those are three items that will be going to council and as a part of this particular project. So the next item that I have to talk to everybody about really quickly is, you may recall a couple of meetings ago, trustee Schwab had a question about the transfer of trust funds to support a couple of our programs that we had more specifically as relates to the volunteer events that are happening usually in the springtime. I let everyone know that we had to do some research and took a little bit more time than what we were expecting. So the findings of that are, back in 2014, there was approval by the board of trustees to use the funds as one-time-only funds for 2015. Unfortunately, since that time, whether it has been library staff or city staff, have approved funds in successive years. I'm assuming under the understanding that that may have been a blanket allocation going forward. As a result, that means that in the next couple of months, probably in January, we will need to come back to this board to request retroactive approval for all of those items that were pulled from the trust that did not actually have board approval. And that would be from 2016 through 2025. So nine years' worth of items that were pulled from the trust, we will need retroactive approval. And so we'll be providing you a presentation of what that looks like, where the error occurred, and then what the process would be for going forward to ensure that does not happen again.
Do you know the rough estimate of the amount?
I don't know the amount right now. That's the other part of what we need to research because what we were looking for in our initial research was just the approval. And that, when we took a look back, that didn't come until 2014. So it was quite a ways back.
Okay, I have a question on the December 3rd city council meeting. Will it just be like a consent agenda item or will it be a full presentation?
It will be consent item only.
Okay.
And that concludes my report unless you have any other questions.
Have there been any updates or changes? I know that, you know, in previous meetings we've seen totals in terms of number, estimates at least. Any, any changes to the approval purchase of those items?
Are we talking about the FFNE items? Are we talking about the, from the trust for the, for the volunteer events?
I'm talking about what's going on consent agenda. It's as we approved it, and there haven't been any.
Perfect. No, we have not, we've not incurred any changes. We do know that there may be some changes coming. However, likely what will happen is we are phrasing the staff reports and the appropriate documents to indicate that these will be up to a certain amount of money. And the items, although we're presenting them as estimates of what we will purchase, because of some of the changes that potentially could occur, it gives us flexibility in being able to swap out individual furniture items.
Okay, perfect. And I recall those previous discussions in our previous meetings as well, that, you know, the specific chair, maybe it's out of stock, but we'd still in a similar and within that still similar budget range is what we're getting.
Correct. Yeah. It will be up to a maximum amount. It's, I'm, I, when I looked at it, it was ballparking about $350,000 for the total FFNE first and second floor. That's excluding the stacks. It's just the stacks are about 380, I believe it is.
Thank you.
Quick question, just so I understand. But the trust will have less funds after more research is done?
No, no, no. The trust will still, like, the, everything was pulled out of the trust that was supposed to. It just simply did not have the administrative approval of this board that was required.
Got it. Okay.
So that's all we're going to be seeking is the formal official approval from this board to retroactively say it was okay for us to be able to do that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
So I, if I recall correctly, the Friends will be providing a donation to cover study pods. Do we have a rough estimate of the cost of that? And will that need to go before city council if it surpasses that threshold?
So I believe the short answer, it's going to heavily depend on what the cost of those pods are, and Reno can answer that more specifically. There is a threshold in which it would have to go to city council. My recommendation in having a conversation with Reno is that instead of going through the process we're going through now with the library foundation, which is they're donating money and we're actually purchasing those items, what we are recommending with the Friends is they actually purchase those items directly and have them delivered as an actual furniture item material to us. Anything over $100,000. So if that is the, that's because that's the threshold that has to go to city council. Anything over that needs to be approved by the city council. However, if those four pods are under that, then no approval from city council would be required. It would just be a sign-off by the city manager.
And I'll just add to that, that it should be under 100,000. The specific quote is going to depend once I meet with Ed and Robert to discuss which version of the pods work best for the project. But it's in a rough park of like, you know, 60,000, give or take.
For all three?
For all four.
Four, okay. If they purchase on their own and donate the pods, not the money to us, would they still be able to get that special pricing? Or would they get an elevated pricing?
What I'll mention is most of those pods are outside of the contract terms that we're getting from the other furniture vendors. So it's more of a, I'm going to try to see if I can get them the best price or if there is a contract we can get to, but it's a separate purchase. So I wouldn't expect it to be the same method as with the foundation where we wanted to make sure it was all one purchase under one contract. Pods being more specialty, we don't have that same restriction.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Robert, Reno, and Ed. We will go on to item number three, discussion and possible vote to augment the library's collection budget from trust funds. John was supposed to present, but I think you'll be reading out an email?
Correct. So I'll be reading an email that trustee Schwab wanted to share with everyone. "Hello, fellow trustees. I'm sorry I can't be there for our November 13th meeting. On the agenda today is a discussion and possible vote on allocating trust funds to augment the library's collection budget for the remainder of the fiscal '25-'26 year. Currently, our library has an annual collection budget which hasn't changed since 2017. In past decades, the LBOT voted to give trust funds to increase the collection budget. This unfortunately is nothing new. We have the opportunity to help the library in its reopening of the renovated downtown location with a more adequate collection budget. There is no possibility of city increasing the budget this fiscal year. As previously discussed, with no annual adjustment for inflation for eight years, we are approximately 50,000 per year short of parity with 2017. As an increase of 4,000 per month for the remainder of the year would be incredibly beneficial, and I would enthusiastically vote giving the library 24,000 in January for the January through June 2026 period. Thank you, John Schwab."
We discussed this in the previous board meeting, and I thought we were going to leave it up to Reno with coming up with a list and a budget that, because I think that you mentioned that you were concerned about ordering too much and not having the space. So I don't know if, Reno, I'm asking you, is 24,000 reasonable? Is it too much? Is it not enough? And have you had a chance to think about what you would have asked for?
I do not have a number for you today. The ask is a reasonable ask, but I do still have concerns about current storage. And then if it's the intent of the board to say purchase for the reopening, then I think I can better coordinate with our collections development team to plan for that as an alternative. But 24,000, if you estimate that each book costs around 20, $24, that's around 1,000 more books that we can purchase. And we could probably split that 50/50, children's, adults. So it's around 500 extra new titles. Believe it or not, it's not that much because books are expensive. But that is kind of the scale of what we're talking about. One thing I would say is I would caution the board just a little bit in case that there's any unexpected cost related to the renovation. I think if we were closer to say that January period, once everything's been approved by council, et cetera, and we have, for example, the full stack map, so I can properly plan out how much space we will have versus what we currently have on site, I'd be better able to give you kind of a breakdown of, this is the area I recommend replacing, these are how many old titles we might have that could be swapped out. I'll also mention that in the trust, there is a budget that's specified for use for teen and adult materials, and it's around like 24,000, which is essentially what John is asking for or recommending here. That has already been allotted by the trustees for that purpose. And so it might be that we ask that we use that in the future. Or of course, if you'd like, adding more funds as John is suggesting. But there's a number of options here.
So does it make sense to table this as a January agenda item?
It can. I can definitely have a much more robust report and recommendations by January than I do today. And again, that really depends on, we're still in the talk about whether, how, what stacks would be included, what the stacks will look like, and those kind of decisions are just now finalized. And so I haven't had a chance, because that happened basically this week, or thereabouts. And so I haven't had a chance to really do the math as to say, like, how many stacks and books will work.
How much time would you need, like, month-wise before the opening?
To?
To order books, purchase?
We usually like ordering like two months out. So if we were to order around the time we had been planning, like April, that would be enough for June or later. Or if we're looking at January, like February would be enough. And keep in mind that we can plan ahead depending on how it works, and we can tell our collections team, hey, we're anticipating this much, ready the orders, and then have them kind of in the works depending on what we anticipate, and we can cancel orders. There's one update later in the agenda, which is under my report. One of the main library vendors went bankrupt. So right now, I'm also making, I want to make sure that if we do place a major order or plan to make an order of like more volumes, that we're having that capacity on the backend. I don't expect too much of a delay, but just another factor that I didn't anticipate when we were first writing up this agenda.
If I can jump in here really quick, just to kind of put a bow a little bit more on this. If you were to, other than what Reno's already indicated has been approved by the, the trust for the youth book collections, anything above and beyond that would have to go to city council for approval. And that process is, can be relatively quick, but my, myself as your liaison and staff member, that would take this to city council, I would need a little bit of time to be able to make sure that I'm meeting the proper and appropriate deadlines to place that item on the consent agenda. So you will need to factor that into your decision-making process is all I'm telling you.
What would you say is a good amount of time that we should build buffer in for those processes?
The, I would say you're probably looking a minimum of three weeks out. Because there is a certain process. I have to place it on the agenda. I have to make sure the staff report gets in, and all of that has to be done at a certain timing intervals.
So if we potentially wanted to get this in motion by February, so you can start placing that order, I would say we would need to discuss this at next month's meeting, December, that way.
If, I would say you're probably okay to wait until the January meeting, given, given when your meetings occur, which is the second Thursday of every month. That would allow me to place it on the agenda by the first week of February. And then once that happens, then, and usually those approvals are non-controversial and are able to move forward very quickly. That will give Reno and his team the opportunity to be able to place that in early February. So I still, still think there's an opportunity to be able to do that at the January meeting, to give him a little bit more time to understand what best suits the needs of the library.
So in, in planning for the reopening of the library, and from what we just saw, there we're going to have a maker space, and then we're going to have a teen space. And I think a lot of our focus has been like on the FFNE and the infrastructure. Am I correct to assume that there will be other costs needed to be able to supply and provide supplies or machinery for these spaces? Is that something that we have tentative in the pipeline for grants? Or would those requests possibly also come to the trustees to fund?
Those types of requests, say, for example, supplies would probably be covered by our operating budget. For specialty items, say like the 3D printer or something of that nature, we'll likely look first for grant funding. Our Friends are also very keen on supporting those types of initiatives, kind of more programming-based and event-based. So supplying a 3D printer so we can run programs about 3D printing is one example. And of course, larger ticket items that we think are outside of the scope of the Friends, those might be ones where if we can find a grant that works, we might come back to the trustees and give you the opportunity, if you so choose, to fund. But really, I don't expect too many of those in at least the first couple of months. A lot of it is going to be getting used to the space and seeing what needs are in the day-to-day use, and then kind of building up.
Okay. And so have you had those conversations? Because I imagine we would want to have some equipment in like the maker space, right, for the opening?
Yeah.
And has, has that been aside from the pods or in conjunction with the conversation of the pods?
It has been an aside from the pods. Other funding, the Friends have been in discussion, and I can't speak for them, but they did say that they had up to a certain amount that they were willing to fund. But really, the main conversation we've had so far has been with those pods. But they, the, the scope of what we'd be looking at isn't as much as when we're looking at, say, buying pods or buying, you know, the FFNE for that first or second floor. It's more in the scale of, you know, 10,000, 20,000 type, which is a lot for most people. But what we're talking about, the scale of public library is much more reasonable and something we can also plan to purchase over time using our existing, say, operations or grants that we receive.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
So are we in agreement to move this to January?
I think we should move to January.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense. And that gives Reno time to put together the possible wish list.
All right. So my direction is to work on a plan and kind of a presentation for the board outlining how we would spend in the ballpark of the 24,000 that John has suggested. Is that correct?
I mean, I wouldn't.
Limit?
Yeah, I mean, what do you need? Because if it's not 24,000, it would be great not to spend the whole amount. If you make a case that you need more, then we would like to hear that.
Okay. Just making sure I understand.
Yeah, I would think of it as a range.
And almost in prep for that, I mean, would it be reasonable to maybe at the December meeting, have a presentation just on the collections developments, like process, just an understanding too of what is being looked at and how that's being assessed and what they think about and what they, just process-wise, I feel like that education component maybe in the December meeting would be helpful as more background work is happening come the January to have that proposal of the work, just.
I can certainly have that ready for the December meeting.
Okay. I don't, I don't think we need a motion to put it on. Okay, perfect. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the statistics report. That will be Reno presenting.
All right. So we have the July, August, and September stats up on the screen, also in your packet. Nothing too surprising in the stats. As a reminder, the dip in programs in August is usually to allow for staff to have a break as students return to class and to reset for the fall, which is why we decreased the total number of programs during August. Other than that, the physical checkouts continue to be solid. We had the dip as we normally do following summer into the fall as students return to class. Other than that, our digital circs continue on trend, pretty stable as far as overdrive and especially hoopla, since those are still capped. Any questions on any of the stats? You'll see in red Pioneer Room visits. As I mentioned during our walk, I learned that the automated handling machine, so the sorter, that computer also controlled the counting system for the gates that are in the Pioneer Room. So I'm now working with the vendor to reinstall the software on a different computer, so that way we can get access to those counts. From past experience, the machine itself keeps account of everything. And once you plug it in, unfortunately, it's going to give it as one giant count, but then I usually just subdivide it by the months. So I'll probably, probably this next month, I'll see like 20, like 2,000 instead of 500 visits per month at the Pioneer Room, but we know that's not the reality.
I think I can go back to last year's agenda, but I'm just curious what the public library visits were in 2024 during kind of this range of three months.
They're very similar, honestly. The average for last year was around 22,000 throughout the year of the 2024-2025 fiscal year. In the summer, let's say our highest month is usually like June, July. June, of course, we were moving into the library. Last June, July, we were in the range of like 25,000 visits. So we're still in the same range, obviously with a much smaller location in a different part of town. So overall, visits are as good as I think we could have expected. Also mentioned, and it's not going to be much of variance, but the counting system at the main library is a different counting system that we have at the mall, but I would expect that difference to be, you know, in the neighborhood of maybe 5%, 10% different. So still, for these numbers, close enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Reno. Next, we'll move on to the library director's report.
As I always like to have first, I have good news, which is, you may have seen in the news, especially if you follow library news, which I know I do, but not necessarily everybody does. The Carnegie Corporation in New York is celebrating the 250th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence with $10,000 gifts to a number of Carnegie libraries. One of Escondido's early libraries was a Carnegie library, and so we will be receiving a $10,000 gift from Carnegie. We're in that process. At some point, we will have to come back to you to accept the gift, and then it's going to go to council. But I did want to give you the good news that we have been awarded that, or in the process of being awarded that. And it will be something that we can use to help us with the return to the library, or it could be used for programs. Once the library reopens, it's unrestricted as long as it's used for library and its mission. And so that's great news. Only, I think, I say only, but almost 1,700 public libraries are receiving the gift. But you also have, or is it 1,200, 1,280 are receiving the gift of the 1,680 libraries that were funded by Carnegie. And so this is a great first step. It seems that the Carnegie Corporation is moving more towards supporting libraries again. We had applied for a grant with them about a year ago. We weren't selected, but it might have put us in the running for this. So we're happy to always be looking for those grant opportunities, even if we don't get them, because you never know what might happen. And this is one example. So we're very excited about this.
Congrats on getting that done.
Yep. I would like to take more credit, but really, it's the fact that the library existed and received Carnegie funding back in, I think, 1905 or '08, something like that is when our Carnegie library, and it was an amount of like $7,000 back then, was what was needed to fund and build the library. And then the city had to commit to giving a certain amount each year following that to support books and a librarian. And that's how we got a Carnegie library in Escondido. Learn more at the Pioneer Room. Second update, less fun news. I alluded this, to this earlier, but a major vendor of library materials, Baker &amp; Taylor unfortunately went into bankruptcy and is no longer going to be selling books to anybody. We had from them very limited exposure. We purchased from them our new adult Uh, we purchased from them our new adult fiction. Um, and we also had a lease for adults fiction and nonfiction. Um, we were fairly easily able to transfer the purchases of the adult fiction books over to one of our other vendors and then the lease. While we prepay that in advance, we also had a full stock of the number of lease items on site. So at this point, we were just retaining ownership of all those lease items and not returning them. Um, and so at the end of the day, that actually nets us a little bit more than what we paid for in the lease. Um, and so now we're just shifting those funds that would have been used for the re-up of the lease next year for going back into those collections, primarily adult fiction and adult nonfiction. Um, and we are exploring other lease programs through other vendors. And as a refresher, we lease items in order to keep them fresh. Um, that allows us to not have to buy five copies of bestsellers. Instead, we buy two and we lease three. And then once they're no longer hot and popular, we swap out those three. Usually we retain one or two copies and that gives us an ability to maintain a fresh collection without having to dedicate and buy specific titles. Any questions before I move on to highlights? No? Okay, good. October highlights, so October is a very active month, uh, even though it's a little bit slower than our summer months, we have a lot of activity, especially at the mall. Uh, we were part of the mall's Halloween trick-or-treat, the Malloween as they call it. Uh, we had almost six hundred visitors to the library's stop. Um, so that's about as many people as we get on a busy day in the library. Um, so you can see there a couple of our pictures right outside the children's library. I was also really happy to see the community engagement for our Ofrenda, uh, which you see in the second picture. Uh, each of the butterflies represents either a message to a loved one or a memory that was written down by a member of the public and then posted for everybody to share and see. Um, and we had, it looks like two hundred and thirty of those were filled out by the community and we had that up for around a little bit more than a week. It was around two weeks we had the Ofrenda up and then we took it down just recently. So again, it's a matter of engaging the community. It's a way of showing, um, respect for the diverse cultures we have in the area and it's another way of engaging them to, one, come into the library and hopefully check something out. We've also continued at the mall our STEM programming in partnership with Cal State San Marcos. Um, you can see that image there where they were learning how to use Thinkercad to design in three D space. And our team programs continue to be well attended with our art studio, um, doing a number of fun pumpkin and Gothic garden type, uh, crafts, again focusing on something that combines sustainability with arts and crafts and library interests. Moving on to the adult services, you can see here a number of programs that were both in the community space such as the Zumba, part of our Health EU program and series. We also had a very successful and full, um, horror jeopardy trivia. Uh, we had, I believe, twenty participants and a number of teams. They competed for some prizes, some of them donations from mall partners. Uh, and that was a nice turnout. Again, we had that program last year and we did it again and filled up right away. Mentioning the Pioneer Room, just very quickly, uh, our Pioneer staff has been engaged in community outreach, both with local historical societies and also with the tribal nations. Um, so we're trying to build more representation in both how we capture Escondido history, uh, through our oral history projects for Spanish speakers, but also building those relationships with our tribal nations and communities to make sure that if they need a space to preserve their memories, their history, they can turn to us if they don't have an adequate space or something similar in their communities. And last but not least, I'll mention that we continue to strengthen our community outreach and engagement. So you can see here, um, Ms. Evelyn doing a storytime at Queen Khalifa's Magic Circle in celebration of their twenty-second anniversary. Uh, and we continue to do these types of programs throughout the community, both for children and also we're strengthening our adult services outreach, um, with our new adult services outreach team that we've created. And those are my updates. If you have any questions? No? And I'll mention that we are working on our annual report and so you'll see a nice summary probably before the end of the year, probably in either December meeting or January, depending on any feedback we receive from the city. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Reno. Um, now that you bring up the annual report, I have, um, how far in advance, um, do you start planning or LSNS are planning, um, for the strategic plan? I think our current one ends in twenty-seven.
Correct.
Is that something that we're, we're starting to get in the works or?
Yes, and that'd be something that I want to work with both you, the board, and also the city. Um, I think a goal for the next strategic plan is to better align it with the city's strategic goals and plans, uh, with input from you, the board. Um, but I believe in the past, there's been more of a disconnect between the library's strategic plan and what the city has been doing and I want to make sure that they're better aligned. Um, and that we all know what everybody's doing is, is my goal.
Got it. Okay. Um, do you have a rough timeline for that yet or worse, it's, it's still too early to tell?
It's a little early, but we'll probably start those discussions about next year, um, leading up to it. And it usually takes us about, it can take as long as we need, but normally six months to do. The most time-consuming part is, um, going out into the community and making sure we take surveys and we do community conversations and focus groups, um, to ensure we have a good sampling of what the community's needs are at that point in time to then better formulate the strategic plan and those goals based on, at least in part, on what the public's interests and expectations are.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I just had a comment, um, you know, thank you as always for this report and I, I did love reading about, um, those visits and those outside kind of trips. Um, are there, how, how typical is that kind of with the staff? Cause I look at it too as a good professional development opportunity, obviously research based, all, you know, educational, all of that. Um, so I just wanted to give kudos to both of those kind of being noted in here and just curious if there were any other upcoming ones planned or which ones you typically do.
We do at least in memory, i- it varies month to month. Um, but we now have, we, in the past, we only had really one staff member dedicated to outreach. Uh, we've now expanded that to three and then other staff that incidentally also joined them. Um, so it's been a concentrated effort on our part, uh, myself and Dan, um, our assistant director, um, to make sure that we go out more into the community, especially since we've been in a new location, um, to one, both inform the public of where we are and two, to remind them and to see new people of what the library is and can do. Uh, and we are also expanding it in preparation to the fact that a lot of people are going to be curious with the new reopening as to, oh, the library is open, what can we learn? What can we do? What are these new spaces? What's different, right? Um, so that's all planning ahead as we start training and these types of events help our staff get more comfortable with being out in the community, uh, and get more exposure. And we've already started seeing new developments internally with new partners to come in and based on outreach events. And so that's all part of the strategy of building the library as that cultural hub to bring people in while we also go out, uh, to see them.
Yeah, I just want to add real quick, um, my daughter and I would do the Escondido Please trunk-or-treat and we've done it for a few years and it's grown considerably and there is a lot of people in the community that go to that. It's right in the California Center for the Arts. So I would suggest if you're looking for events next year to promote the library, to consider that.
And I've done trunk or treats as our fun.
And this one is the Escondido Please.
Thank you. Um, next we'll have the trustee library use report. Francis, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Don't know much, um, just the family has visited the library like they do on a regular basis. Um, everyone still loves it. So thank you for all of you and your staff's efforts.
Couple visits, couple usage of the, again, the drop returns, um, that are, make it so easy over there by the mall. Um, a few Libby checkouts as well. I've been pleased to see that there's been really good kind of hot selection on the available now, which has been nice. Um, so yeah, that's about it for me.
Um, I stopped by to look at, um, the Ofrenda. It was really beautiful to see and to kind of read some of the words that the community has shared. Um, so thank you for putting all of those events together.
I have been too busy to visit, but my, I'm getting my life back now after my son's wedding is over. But I have been seeing a lot more, um, events, I think, or I, I just feel like there's such a larger presence on social media and I don't know if it's because there's more events happening at the mall and out in the community, but I, I've been like pleasantly surprised to see how, um, visible the library is, even though I haven't visited. I feel like I, I know a lot about what's going on the past few weeks and I did take a picture of something that I saw online, but I'm having a hard time finding it now. But there was a author visit and I believe her name was Julie Johnson and she was talking about Hidden San Diego.
Yeah.
Um, and I did go to that about a month or two ago and I was happy to see that she's coming back on December fourth, I think, to the library to talk about her haunted stories because she got a lot of questions about that, about when she was talking about Hidden San Diego and she said, that's another time, another event. And so I'm really glad that you secured her for that because there's a lot of community interest about her haunted stories. So I recommend you guys check that out if you're interested. She was, has a lot of good stories to say. So good job with curating those people to come in and, and the community was definitely like, we had, you guys had to bring out more chairs because there are a lot of people showed up. So great job with that.
Awesome. I might need to stop by for that one, although I don't do spooky too well. Um, okay. With that, it concludes our meeting. We will be meeting again, um, at, oh, we don't have a date. Do we have a date?
December eleventh.
Eleventh at four P M. Thank you, Reno. Thank you, everybody.